...phone and said he was my cousin and he was in jail and it was wrong for the accused. And this guy gets on saying he's his lawyer, he needs $4,000 right now to get him out of there. And dang if you didn't send. She's old, she don't know, you know?
I know a young person in Vulcan went and got $15,000 in Bitcoin. She was over in the rivers, dropping that hundred dollar bills in. $15,000. Twenty minutes. So it happens and it doesn't have to be old and not be young, young. Could be anyone. We are getting close to.
Yeah, just jumped over here, so. It looks like you're starting to.
Okay, so we're up and live at 7:45. Um, we have an agenda in front of you. Is there any additions to the agenda? If not, somebody wish from the agenda, Richard has presented. Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question as a favor. Anybody opposed? It's carried unanimously. Okay, council minutes of the October the 11th. Any errors, missions, questions? If not, somebody wish to move it. Judy? Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question as a favor. If anybody opposed, hearing none, we'll declare this carried unanimously. Okay, cash statements. The period ending September the 13th.
So as you can see, as of the end of September, we have a whole lot of excess cash in our bank account, but we do through our GICs, our term deposits and that, we're maintaining with our reserves of about 3.9. Which majority of that cash is being held obviously for the industrial subdivision.
What do we have to pay out on that?
Oh, we're paying in progress payments. You'll start seeing them come out.
Okay.
Okay, any questions for Kim? If not, Cole? Cole moves the cash statement. Any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question as a favor. Anybody opposed? Hearing none, we declare it as carried unanimously. Okay, year to date.
As you can see, it's pretty straightforward. Everybody's had a chance to review it. Again, just for those that do the quick math on the bottom line, we have three months left, should have about 1.5. Of course, the 600,000 that we put in a note in the sewer for the money that we received from the county throws those numbers off. When you're doing quick math, you go line by line through. Unless there's something that stands out, they all look to be on track for whatever route that the three months ago.
So go ahead, Tom.
In regards to the swimming pool, how did our revenue, well, I guess if you look back compared to, did we do better this year?
Yes, on certain areas. Some of the passes were higher and lower. Chris had those in his report last month. Or sorry, at the last meeting, Chris had that.
And the bad thing about the swimming pool one, if you look back at last year's, is that we had that money from the county that skewed that one. That's why last year it looked so big.
300 and some thousand.
Yeah, in revenue, yeah. And so.
So your question is probably more pertinent than that if you didn't know of that 300,000.
In the comparisons, the swimming lessons and that were all very comparable. There was movement up and down a little. Overall, the revenue was very close to the same.
Any other comments, questions? If not, somebody wish to move it. Another? Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question as a favor. Anybody opposed? Hearing none, declare carried. Okay, current business, the MPC meeting, appointment at large.
Everybody's had a chance to read the report. We took this to the MPC. We had good news. We actually had three people interested, which was really nice to actually have our members of that community interested in participating. They reviewed the three and I did put that note that was discussed at the MPC that Matt was filling in for a one-year term for somebody who was left town. So he just kind of got started on that as well. So the MPC, when they made their recommendation, that was one of the things that played factor in there is normally it would be a four-year appointment and he's just getting started and participating with that as well. So again, we appoint somebody every year. So the recommendation from the MPC was to appoint Matthew July, a four-year term ending October 2026.
Is that a very good enough motion?
Okay, so no moves to point. None. Any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question as a favor. It's carried. Anybody opposed? No. So carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the replacement of the 1991 lift truck.
Everybody's had a chance to read the report. You guys all know that Stu, through conversations, through last year's budgeting, through conversations that we had during our tours, all that, and more recently, that our lift truck needs replacing. It was scheduled and I will tell you that it was thrown on the list because that was just the year that it happened to need to be filled in at the value of $90,000. You can see that the truck is a 1991, the lift that's on it is a 1975 and it was moved there in 2004. So we've been looking into it based on certification in that for this type of equipment. That lift can't be sold the way it is and needs to be decommissioned. So we're essentially going to give the value back of the public auction for the truck itself. So that's really all that council could look at is return. Stu, as you know, has been out looking for a good used replacement and he puts himself in quite a spot because he's going out and talking to these guys if something's available rather than waiting for an email to come back. He said, you know, really to do this properly, I kind of need to know how much, where that ranges, what am I looking for? How much can I spend? And I said, well, we can take that to council for approval based on amending your, you already have acknowledged that you'd like to amend the replacement schedule to accommodate an immediate replacement. So that gets into the financial side where it sits on the list. It was originally allocated $90,000 for replacement. Of course, back 10 years ago, we started this, you could buy a lift truck for $90,000. Now I'll pick up a loan. The loan is on here, the truck itself is $100,000. So the anticipated price to be 120, 240 for a new replacement. That being said, you guys only allocated 90 to it. And we currently only have 44,000 sitting in that reserve for that purpose. So basically, we want you to have a discussion whether you want to allocate 44,000 to it or a full 90 for a replacement to try to get a decent, fairly decent, maybe a couple of year old truck. And/or if you do that, then the balance of the 46,000 could come from contingency reserve. Again, Stu wanted me to point out that he's looking for a good used replacement, so it may not be. But he needs to have a threshold of how much money to be spent on this.
So we're looking at 90,000 bucks just for the truck and then addition 44 to 46? Where we want to just do that 44 plus 46?
44 plus 46 to bring it to the 90,000 that was originally. Because we know, we know we're not going to find a used truck for what we originally, or a new truck.
Yeah, what, the new trucks, 120 to 140?
120 to 140. So looking at a, you know, five, six, seven-year-old truck that's come from, say, a sign company or somebody that's for us, some of these guys have replaced these trucks fairly regularly. Now, if he has a dollar figure, he could go to a public auction and pick up one of the trucks if there's a decent one there.
How often did they use that?
The truck? Quite a bit. To be completely honest, when I was going to replace that truck with a genie lift that we want, the genie lift works well and it's more for indoor jobs and those sort of things because it's electric. We find that when we attach that trailer, we're doing Christmas lights, that trailer. You know, you move 12 feet, have to put all the stable items back, get down, lift it up. Whereas the truck, you pull up, you go up, you go down and you carry on. So they, where I was going to phase that truck out, they found that they could. They could, but it's not time effective, so.
And they also have another device on that truck where they use it for exercising the valves.
Yeah.
So it gets used more than just the lift truck part because it's got hydraulics.
Because it's got the PTO and the hydraulics.
So they just flip it over instead of doing the lift truck part, they go and enter their exercise in the valves.
Yeah, we plug in a hydraulic exerciser to it, so.
Do you think that when we're doing the financial planning, we could look at the overall 25-year capital? Because I think that some of the costs might be changing.
Yeah, and we do that on a year, like on an annual. So this is, this is one that when we brought it back, we both sat there and went, why didn't we put that in 2033? And I said, honestly, I think I threw it on there because I was going to get rid of the truck. So it was, it wasn't a discussion at the time because we'll throw it on there, but we go into that plan. Then through the experience we gained over the last 10 years, we still need the truck.
Cole, yeah?
My theory would be is if it's a necessity to the town, how a lift truck, I think the sooner you do it, the better. I mean, with inflation and whatnot, I'd rather have a good piece of equipment than you're not having to spend money on maintenance and fixing. Parts are becoming more harder to become, hard to get and their cost is going up. So what Stu recommends is that that's would be the most efficient way. I would trust that. From my experience dealing on equipment, I would tend to agree with.
Well, one thing worth discussing is he is, let again, looking for a used truck at this point. So the 90,000 will get a decent, but he has looked at trucks. Obviously, you've seen the other that we have emailed out to you. And we've seen ranges anywhere from 45,000 to 100. So this is where he's saying, have council pick that number and then I can start going to negotiate and then try to find a good piece at that.
So yeah, like I like the 90,000 range. It gives him flexibility on what he sees to be the best fit.
He's comfortable with that number?
Yeah, and really that was just the math that we did. Like he said, you know, that was what we originally put for a replacement on that truck. The 44 that we have, that's already in reserve for that capital purchase. It's just the rest of it, the 46, we basically have to wait until 2033 to have that all in reserve. So we're at it. He's basically asking you if you do want to go all the way to $90,000, that the 46,000 has to come from the contingency reserve, which is why you have the contingency.
I was just going to ask, I think you answered the question a little bit. I was going to say, I mean, if it's going to be used, why thought that if it's only used like seasonally a little bit here and there, is it something to look at leasing? But I mean, if it's going to be used on a constant basis, then yeah, obviously it makes more sense to purchase.
And when you say leasing, leasing a piece of equipment for year-round or just leasing it on that date?
Well, I guess leasing. See, I'm not sure how, I didn't know how much they use it. But I mean, if they're using it for lights, like in the winter, Christmas lights, but then if they're checking, you know, for streetlights and the other stuff like you're saying, I guess it makes more sense to own as opposed to leasing. I wouldn't know what the lease costs are, but I'm sure that's probably been brought up.
Like the last one we lost, I'm just wondering, I would imagine these things are in high demand, a good used one. Do we need a variance form? Like, is 90 enough? Like if it came up, there's one for 95 and there's a stall, you know what I mean? That's, that's.
And that's the thing, it's just drawing that. Counsel needs to make a motion to spend that money.
Up to this.
Up to, and it doesn't matter what.
Okay.
Well, you know, you can pick a figure, whether 90 is right or 100 is better or 80 is the proper one or whatever.
So the other 10,000 would come with a contingency?
That's 46,000.
We added it to a 100. Would it come, the other 10, would it come with?
Anything additional will come out of contingency, so.
And we do have money in contingency and just that it takes it out of contingency and, you know, don't use it.
Which means during budget time, you have to decide how you're going to talk about your contingency. Because we'd like to keep that around 200,000 without contingency, so.
Well, I think the way this is worded to me is for $90,000, you can get something that is not going to last 25 years, am I right?
Right. And we would adjust the, we would put it in immediately for a replacement. If it's 15 years old, then it may need to be replaced in 10 years. 10 years. If it's five years old, immediately. And then from there, on a 25-year cycle, the way forward.
Another thing that comes to mind is with a new versus a used machine, new equipment, there's a lot of safety standards that have really changed in the last five or 10 years. That could be really something to keep in mind with guys on the job. I don't know if 90,000 is quite enough. I know Stu, he's a pretty frugal person, so.
And the thing, one of the biggest things on there is the recertification, making sure that the truck can be certified.
What would that be worth, the recertified?
The certification isn't that much and I can't remember the dollar figure. I think it's under $1,000, but it's, you have to have the machine going over to where our current machine would be on.
Yeah, like the current, like Kim was saying, the truck might have some value, but the rest of it has value as scrap.
Yeah, we have to cut it apart.
It has to be chopped up.
Chopped up.
Yeah. Well, it is, but they would have to take it in pieces. They wouldn't be able to take it anywhere.
Somebody would try to put it on another vehicle.
Put on another vehicle and then if it does fail, then potentially we sold it to Joe Citizen out there and then it failed and then they come back to us as a municipality, so it's.
Well, brings up an interesting point though, you know, about the change in technology, you know? If anything comes ahead, if the technology is driven by safety standards, you know, that has to be considered because all of a sudden, if you buy one that doesn't meet the new safety standards, then you'd have to bring that up too.
Right.
You know, so that's a very good point you brought up and it's making me thinking, like, you know, like it's 30 to 50,000 more for a new one. And that's a lot of money.
It is.
You know, for our other town.
Having said that, when you buy a piece of equipment like this and keep it recertified, year after year, you generally don't have to change to a fire plasma or a P.O. or something. It's when you purchase a new one, then it would come with a fire plasma or a P.O. or something, so.
But do we need to theoretically ask Stu to get some pricing on a new one? So we knew exactly, you know, as an example, if a new one that could meet his standard was 110 and we're tipping that 90, we're better off to spend, putting in the new one to meet the standard that he believes he needs. It's going to be 200,000, well then, you know, we definitely know that use is the way to go. Hey, Judy, sorry.
No, I was moving my, okay, Cole.
If we do make a motion to not exceed 90,000, like Gertrude said, it's a little more, could he not come back to us for a grasp?
Yes, yes. This puts, this puts it on so that he can dwell. And not that he tells people upfront, this is what I have to spend. This is just like you going to an auction. This is the amount that I have.
Well, I think Stu's judgment, if he needed more, he'd ask for it in this motion here. So I'm prepared to make a motion that we allow the 90,000 for his.
Fun question. Do we want to, like as Tom said, I think we should find out what a new one's worth at the same time?
Yeah, he just did the rough estimates where he was just called around the way, what's it even worth? And they all told him the same thing, depending on what truck he put and all that sort of thing. So budget 120 to 140 is what they told me.
But again, not knocking Cole's motion at all because I think it's, at least it allows him to go to an auction sale or go somewhere and he's got that amount of money in his back pocket. But it would be nice to know that if he was, could say, I need a, you know, two-ton or three-ton truck and this is what I would like and, you know, go out and say, can you give me some, you know, further pricing? Again, I don't know what it is. I don't have a clue, right? You know, so I'd hate to, I'm not saying that we shouldn't make this motion today, but you know, like with the budget coming up, maybe there's some breathing room to. But yeah, I think you really should look into what a new one would.
Yeah, and I do know that either this week or next week, there is a truck that they've been looking at in its mouth and I believe the range on it was about 50,000. So, and it may be the same as the other one, might have issues with it, but that's the one that he brought up that he like, okay, I'm going to look at this one. I kind of need to know where I stand rather than doing emails and bringing some back to the council.
Even sending a person up there, sorry.
No, I.
So sending somebody up there that costs money.
It does.
You know, so like that has to be brought into effect too. Because if you're going to start driving all over, spending gas, labor, you know, mileage, that has to be brought into consideration too is, you know, I know what, gas is expensive, but that all has to be considered in this too because it costs money to do all this stuff, you know? So I'm kind of thinking that Tom might be wise here in this because somebody might say, here's, you know, we don't need the bells and whistles, we need a lift. Plus some of the jog the valves, right, the hydraulics. So, because I, I don't know, personally, I'm thinking I'd like to know all the numbers. And I want a crew to be safe and that takes another $40,000. And I'd get a good piece of equipment that's already into the 25-year cycle, that might be worth it. I don't know.
Okay.
I'm going to say I trust Stu's judgment on this for getting a used vehicle. I believe that if he is able to get, say, a newer vehicle for only, you know, 10 or 20,000 dollars more, I think he would bring that to Kim and then he could bring it back to council. But I think at this time, like if he at least has that kind of bulk part or if he's looking around and he's like, you know what, it's only 10 or 20,000 dollars more for a brand new one which has a life cycle of 25 years or more, then I think he could read us of that conversation.
One concern and why I would like to approve giving Kim this, or Kim, giving Stu this funding would be, I've sat on these online auctions with your brothers and, I mean, there might be one tomorrow or the next day. You miss out on that piece of equipment that might fit our community. I mean, timing could be essential to this and like I say, if something came up, Stu could come back at us with it. I think that's the way to proceed. Because I have the same opinion. Like I'd like to know what all the factual details are in a new one or what their options are, but like Barb says there, I assume Stu has already kind of gone through that and I trust his opinion, so.
And we did administratively have that discussion when he talked about 140 for a new machine. Do we put it up for tender? You know, because you can get better pricing through tender. One of the benefits of buying a new machine is warranty, things like that. But then that's what he said. He said, you know, at the 90,000 that we have, we have to bring it back to council and ask for more money. Do I try to find a piece of equipment in that 90,000 that would be suitable for a short term? That's kind of where we settled with it and we, again, that's why it was to come to council to ask. There's merit both waiting for and purchasing a new one or like for the last several weeks, for a couple of months, he's been focused on trying to find a used machine that would fit the criteria.
But again, you know, we also have to take a look at, and I think that's what we used to do with our half tons as we used to, or some of the other pieces of equipment. We ended by a piece of used equipment because that's all we thought we could afford. And then five years from now, we've got to buy another used piece to replace that one, you know, another five years. Whereas like Barb said, if the cost difference isn't that huge, then to go out and be able to buy a piece that you can say, now we can own it for 25 years. We know how many hours we put on it a year. It's not as, it's more costly effective over that period of time. Sure, the bite takes a little bit more out of you, but is it better to do that or not? Again, I'm 100% behind Stu, whatever he wants to, you know, recognize that we should do, but.
So one thing that we can do is if council's comfortable with it, you could make this motion, which is. But then we can have a conversation about the brand new truck and what that looks like.
But like you said, at least he has that money in his back pocket, comes across one that.
Should an auction sale come up or something through CPA or.
You find out that the one that Travis is driving around comes up for sale tomorrow. He's got that money, he knows he can go talk to Travis, Travis is, well, you shouldn't pick on Travis, but I mean.
He's the only one that has a trucker out.
So you can say, well, geez, we know exactly the life of it, whereas these other ones, he doesn't know the life of them. I think Cole's motion would stand great and then if Stu has time, he can spend some out and then if it comes in at, you know, under 200,000, well then.
Right. Yes, based on a truck looking at it, we had that conversation, you know, based on a used truck being at 40,000, what life expectancy does it have? Is it three quarters of the way through its life? Are we buying it just because of the truck? And we went back and forth about that and he said, well, the only way you know is by going looking at it. And if you can't make an offer on it when you go look at it, maybe as well not go look at it, so.
So Cole has a motion on the floor.
As it is.
As it is. And then I guess the other part of it is that if Stu doesn't spend it in the next short period of time, maybe he needs to.
Yeah, and we can eliminate that second portion to, when we figure out what we're going to do with the truck itself. So the first part could stand just the way it is because that will cover what's needed for our auditors to explain exactly what you guys are doing. You're authorizing Public Works to spend 90,000, up to no more, no more than 90,000 dollars with 44 coming from the public services reserve and 46,000 dollars coming from the contingency reserve if he was to spend that 90,000.
And I think that second part though is that when we come back and do our budget stuff.
Yeah, well, we start looking at that.
Really maybe put some emphasis on.
Updating our costing.
Our cost. And also maybe, like you said, play with some of the numbers. I mean, you know, say 2033 isn't realistic, you know, it should have been earlier or the greater. And I know that some of them get moved around. We still have one that's not on here that, you know, that we had for a piece of.
A back to back.
Back to back.
Yes.
So it needs to be on here and where it's going to play in.
Yeah, absolutely.
The genie lift will suffice in the meantime?
Oh, yeah, it's always a good backup. It will work in its. It's not as good for putting up decorations and that as we thought it would be.
Okay, any further to discuss?
Is the genie lift a necessity then? Or is there any more value to that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's electric over hydraulics, so we can use it inside the arena, those sort of things. And we need to actually use it quite a bit more because it has a higher lift. So we can use it on the taller streetlights, the flying poles, all of those things that the truck won't reach.
Depending on what kind of truck you.
That's my next question actually.
It may not be a replacement.
So that brings up my next question. You just said something I didn't realize. I thought a lift truck would reach all the poles.
No.
No, 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 no. The one we currently have only reaches the poles downtown.
So what's the, what's the height of the genie lift? What's its max?
27.
But the county has one that's taller.
Yeah, and we used to borrow back and forth.
Okay.
But the one that Stu did look at, the used one, had an extending boom on it, so it's.
It would have been taller than our genie, which then brings up a conversation later on, do we replace the genie?
So, you know, I think if we're going to go get a truck, I think we might have to get it that's all of it, you know?
And that's what he's looking for, yeah.
But this will give him at least a start and then if, we'll give him the, Kim has heard our discussions around potentially looking at a new compared to a used. Okay, so any other discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the questions a favor. Opposed? It's carried unanimously. Okay, committee in the whole meeting, which is the discussion we had a few seconds ago to agree is that we want to discuss our budget process, our budget. And so Kim has proposed a couple of dates.
And in order to mimic what we did last year. And in order to mimic what we did last year, because it was quite successful, especially for new councillors that haven't been involved in, in what a discussion before, having those two shorter meetings rather than trying to hammer everything up in one, gives you a chance to hear all the stuff, take it home, review it for a couple of weeks, come back with any amendments and then gives us an opportunity to amend anything before we do, because we need to have it approved at the December, I believe it's the December thirteenth, regular council meeting. So, the, the suggestion being that we do the same thing with an afternoon meeting, I know that does it act well with his, his work schedule.
I follow this.
Okay, ideally so that you don't have to pay staff to come in in the evening. We could do one o'clock in the afternoon until however long it takes that day and then do it again two weeks later. And I threw out those dates, the twenty-first to the twenty-third, because that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of the third week in November, in between the council meetings. And then two weeks later on the sixth or seventh. The reason why I focused on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is any changes that we need to make, it allows us a couple of days to do that before we put it on an agenda.
So, we're gonna have one afternoon or three?
We're gonna have one, two, two afternoons.
Yeah.
One, one week and then another one two weeks later.
Yeah, okay.
And that's the, councillor Magison did point out to me that he will be gone the twenty-first and twenty-second, so that leaves the twenty-third for that each. You can't on the twenty-third. Okay, so. We're going to be missing somebody regardless in those three days. We have a council meeting on the twenty-eighth. So.
Would the twenty-fourth work better for you, Barb?
That's a Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, good for you?
Well, it's just I have training on the twenty-third all day, so that's the reason why, on Wednesday.
Well, it'd be during the day.
Yeah, it was supposed to be during the day.
Well, the company, we have to bring the staff in and we have to pay them to come. So, it's during the day and then they, it's just part of the job. And but, and it's probably gonna be a three to four hour go at least.
First time around, we could, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but we could possibly go that Friday, twenty. One to, oh, probably five, four thirty, five o'clock. The twenty-fifth, does that work? Whatever works best for everybody, I'll work on it. I did check with the staff on that, but I'm pretty sure we can make it work. Yeah, yeah, well, we're gonna make a motion for the twenty-fifth, November twenty-fifth, and then does December.
Twenty-fifth work?
Does December ninth work for that one? That's a Wednesday, or sorry. Sorry, I gotta get to December seventh, yeah, Wednesday, does that work for everyone?
Yeah, living in for me.
So, we will be, November twenty-fifth and December the seventh. If that works for everybody. And we'll do from one until however long it takes, but usually seven, seven staff before the four thirty at the end of the day, so it's off. You can have any type of.
Okay, so is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Okay, the motion to pick those dates. Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Here you then, I'll call the questions, favor. Anybody opposed? Nope. Here's Yanis. Okay, moving on to the member at large for the community futures.
So, as you know, you're gonna get a presentation, I believe, the end of November from community futures. They are talking about changing the board structure. Really what they're doing is they're looking at going more to like an awards board structure and it's more for continuity. It's, they have councillors getting reappointed all the time and as Will knows, it takes about eighteen months to actually get up to speed on what the community futures are doing. Plus, plus they also deal with financial for businesses, those sort of things. So, on the member at large side, when I talked to Ursula, I said, you know, we make, our council made a motion to have me advertise for a member at large, but if you're changing your board, should I continue with that? And she said, yes, based on it's going to take quite some time for them, even once they come out and explain it to all the municipalities, they have to change how we charter into the, into the group and, and of course, we don't fight, it's provincial funding that we're dealing with, so we all have to change how we deal with corporation, those sort of things. And we have to have everybody agree to that. That process may take a year for them to do or longer. So, she said, you know, I'd appoint you a member at large if you have a good one. And if, if we have a good person and, and they're productive on their board, they'll most likely be asked to continue to serve with the board in the future. So, I said, we'll do the, if she was fine with that, I'd recommend to council, let me do a full, just a normal appointment for three years like we would normally do. And then if things change after the fact, then we can do that. It was interesting, we put it out to the website and social media and we had Daniel Anderson put his name forward. As you guys know, Dan owns property here in town, owns a business in town. He actually did a little bit of outreach out to community futures when they were getting started and talked about business plans, those sort of things as well. So, he has some experience on that side. And in my brief conversation with him, he said that there's some things that he would like to bring up there that he saw from the other side that could make the process easier and or learn a little bit more about it and see how he can help out with that. So, and with his background, with grant funding, those sort of things, he should, he's based his consulting company on, on finding grants for businesses. So, I think he'd be a real good asset.
Yeah, I got a lot of respect for Dan and he's still, glad he's invested back in our community. It's good to have his life. I think he'd be an awesome fit for that.
So, any promotion?
Good.
To appoint Daniel Anderson.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Here you then, I'll call the questions, favor. It's Carrie Yanis. Okay, moving on to community reports, MPC. Any questions on that one? Okay, here in the number one to CSS. On the October thirteenth draft meeting, or draft minutes, sorry, any questions on? Okay, here in the number one to flying clubs meeting.
That was a. Interesting meeting. They had, they got together at the nine in the line, supposed to be there for six, number five to seven, they had a little meeting in the corner. Okay, well, I guess we're done, so. I left. Couple of other people left and I thought they were just having pizza and I guess that wasn't me.
Okay, thank you. Golf club. Okay, any questions, comments? Moving on to library board for the, there's two, September twenty-eighth.
Sorry, who's the, who's the chair of the golf club?
It's Dave Toddery. He's the president.
President? Go ahead.
September the twenty-eighth for the library board minutes. Any questions to ask? If not, then there's the October the nineteenth. Okay, no questions on them. Move on to Orsk, the board minutes of the, June the second meeting, that's their board meeting. Any questions on that on Tom? Okay, no, move on to the executive minutes of Orsk. Oh, sorry, I apologize, sorry to interrupt.
Sorry, I just on the drone, tell Nicole, be on tell them, are they getting drones?
I don't know.
Who's on that one?
I, they, they fly drones all the time to, to do surveys, drone. More like they done in town.
Yeah, so, so Orsk has drones through their service that you can, as if you dispel it, you can hire them to come out and do mapping things like that for you.
I thought they were flying their own drones and I thought.
No. Orsk, Orsk has bought the drones of the operators.
That makes sense, thank you.
So, they're, they're most likely getting that service from Orsk.
Okay.
Well, Richard, you're on Orsk?
Yeah.
Why does this say Coles? Has an extra coordinate on Orsk.
Where are we? Where's Orsk?
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one, I guess.
Carry on.
Okay, any other questions on either of those two, the executive or the?
This is.
Yeah, but it says Orsk.
Oh, yeah, that Orsk has quite a few different committees, subcommittees that different people are members of. So, Cole sits on the intermunicipal subdivision of development appeal board for the personal.
Good, good, good question.
Good guess, though.
Any other questions on the Old River Regional Services Commission? Here in the number seven, Rich DeFalles. Barbara? Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Here you then, I'll call the questions, favor. It's Carrie Yanis. Any opposed? No, it's Carrie Yanis. Okay, moving on to councillor reports, councillor Magison.
Hi, much love to everyone, mostly everyone else. I attended the regional communications meeting in Lomond and it was kind of nice to see, be around the other communities there and see what's going on happening in the county. First time we've had that.
It's twenty nineteen.
It's twenty nineteen, so it's nice to see people again and, and the flying club meeting. At the drop to the minutes there and that's, oh, I'll give you an update on, the industrial lots, we're getting, we're getting some interest in, in those. So, it's good, nice to see some action happening there, so. And that's all I have so far.
Okay, any questions for Laura? Here you then, thank you. Councillor Doyle?
Just same meeting as well in the evening, but we hit the emergency management course during the day. And then started out in the day and ended up at the night, so ended up at the community meetings, all the municipal. That was, I enjoyed that actually. It was, it was quite interesting. The course was excellent. We have to get to our hundred yet, you know, so that, they were gonna, Mel was gonna put that together and get back to us on that, so. Actually, it was very interesting. I enjoyed it. So, it was a day well spent as far as I was concerned, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And I think that's all I got.
Okay, any questions for Richard? Here you then, thank you, councillor Smith.
Same thing as Richard, regional emergency, or yeah, emergency management training, the twelfth, and the regional emergency management advisory committee meeting, and our regional communications meeting, which was really good to see everyone there. It was good to hear from Martin Shields, I think. Got the chance to interact with them very much in person, so that was pretty cool. And that is all I had since our last meeting.
Any questions for Bill? Here you then, thank you, councillor Samson.
On October eleventh, I attended the MCC meeting and on October eleventh, also the emergency roles and responsibilities. That was really, really well done and I really liked how they gave examples of Fort McMurray and Hydrador. It was, made it more real to us, I think. October twelve, at seven o'clock, I had an FCSS meeting as I saw the, the minutes there, I just wanted to highlight just a couple of things. Of course, we accepted the resignation of Joan and also that they would accept with the resignation of Julie Emschad. She's got so much going on and with small kids in the business and that. So, we did do ads for, for both the director and the new member at large. Haven't got anything in at this time. Five people will be turned out attending the FCSS AA conference in Edmonton on the sixteenth to eighteenth. So, hopefully we'll have a director that can be hired and maybe not on yet, but attend the conference. Because it's been, it's, it sounds like a very good one. If any of you that can make it on November fourth, that's that egg night, adults only, twenty-five dollars per person, it's at the CRC and Chris Pup will be there. He does If I Can. He's the one that comes from Matton, born with no arms, no legs. And he does a fantastic talk. He will be at two schools during the afternoon and will be at the CRC that night. So, anybody that can go at, will be a very good evening for sure. And I just want to, you know, I sent out two letters, one to the Minister of Canadian Social Services and one to Joseph Zhao about the concerns of government taking over FCSS and I guess the minister called Joan and said, hi, we received a letter from one of your directors. And how do they know all this? Well, it's out there, so they, they said, we'll be going at least another year. We need to still get your funding. So, that was kind of good to hear. We got an answer instead of reading, I guess, so. So, the letters do help a bit. October seventeenth, we had victim services at nine AM at the Tri Services. Wendy Loader is, is trained. She had a tour of courthouse in Leffbridge, so she knows where to go when she has to go down with the victim. They were allowed to sit in on a domestic violence meeting, even though Vulcan didn't have any on the docket for that day. So, that was interesting for Wendy to get, uh, see how that went. We discussed our Christmas party plans. This is to show our appreciation to the RCMP, our program manager and our advocates. So, it's a good way to keep your relationship going with the RCMP. And if you didn't know, Troy retires January fourth.
Troy Dawson does?
When? January?
Yeah, January fourth. Last February fourth, he moved it up, so I hope he doesn't move it up anymore. So, we'll be sorry to see him go. And our program manager, after the meeting on October twentieth, was Star's daddy here and taken to Calgary to have her baby. And everybody's doing well right now. Baby's still in a queue, but they're doing well, so.
I was wondering what the stars, some stars are doing here.
Yeah. October seventeenth, we had Marcus AGM tour senior housing units. That's the separate buildings that are not part of the large and that's the ones in Carmen Gate, Champion, Lomond and Milo. Milo doesn't have, we're talking about getting him Milo. So, we had people from all of these three villages, plus the town ones there. It was a pretty good turnout. Introductions were made. We, we asked the residents if they had any concerns or what they would like to see us do. And I think they were very pleased to hear that we, we do care and, and we're, we're here for them. They have, there was a few questions. One was about kitchen cabinets. They've been backordered, but they're coming. And there was another one, but it was, it was a good, a good thing to be at and show them that. There was three of us showed up, so myself, Lori and Kelly Nelson. They were very pleased to have us there. Highlights on the golf meeting, I didn't know he was gonna have it on there. So we have a stay and play, there's two sites in the Virginia Mitchell campground that they use. The camp, the town's been charging us $500. And it's been the same two couples for the last couple of years, and they've already pre-booked, so they've been honoring. Even the town has priced up in honor of that $500, because they've been coming all the time. And they golf first thing in the morning, so. The golf course will not be adding credit card charges with that new percentage. They will not be doing that, just as FYI. The forward T of number seven has been rebuilt and it's coming really good. And we got all the, the reins covered before the snow hit, so everything, they got all the spring done and everything, so. I don't know if they got a whole review. We are gonna put the rental homes up for rent and write that out. There will be references, so if you know anybody that needs a rental home, it's got three huge bedrooms. Fireplace, open kitchen, living area, so just an FYI if you know anybody out there.
Do you know the amount?
Eleven hundred plus a tenant.
All right.
And a couple of hours.
Deal?
Yeah. And two full bathrooms? I was asked to attend the Oak Tox Chamber Car Commerce Business League session on October 20th. Went with Kelly Nelson. And it was a really good evening, really well done. And there was a few presentations, there was a podcast, they have a podcast, I don't have the full name of it, it was sent to me, Husband and Wife, any help podcast? And they kind of did the podcast on, so they take four businesses and asked them how they got started and what do they consider success? And how one guy had built up so fast, his business grew so fast, and then he grew it to all Alberta, and then he spread out to B.C. and Saskatchewan, then he went bankrupt. And how he came back from that. So it was really interesting. And then we had Doug, very good, talk on 13 Ways to Kill a Community. And he said, as you know, and I can't remember how many years he was a PC member, a lot of years, right? And he says, but it's okay, I've gone for therapy, I'm okay now. And you know what, he, they, him and this Heather did a fantastic job. And I just thought they did a great job getting, and they were doing it all five days of the week at different places and highlighting different businesses. And I thought, what a great idea, I know they're a bigger center. But it was very interesting to see. And they said the A&W was going down, and they, they asked the CEO, how did you get the A&W's to kind of pop back up? This being a popular place to go? He said, clean bathrooms.
Yeah.
That's what the people wanted, and that's what they gave them.
Some bathrooms that are discussed.
So it could just be something as simple as that. So that was a very interesting evening, too. So that's my report, long, but it was good week, two weeks.
Any questions for Judy? Thank you, Judy. Moving on, nice coffee, more.
The elder abuse meeting was canceled this month because we didn't have a forum. And then I guess the health wellness meeting, to attend the regional council communication meeting in Lowman. Dinner was excellent and it was very informative. And it was nice to just talk to people casually as well. So I enjoyed that. And then, of course, the library meeting. And I sent him the preliminary financials to Karen as well for the asking amount, it's the same from the town, so. And that's about all I have done.
Okay, any questions for Mar? Here, none, Counselor Doyle?
I also attended the emergencies training in Lowman. Thought it very informative. It's one of those things I hope we never have to use. But I guess being knowledgeable of it is a good thing. I had no other meetings other than that, so.
Okay, any questions for Cole? Okay, thank you. Okay, I couldn't make it to the one earlier session on the, in Lowman, because I had a SEWA EOI meeting with engineers and the lawyers. The lawyers told us we couldn't talk about anything, but the engineers told us. So it was quite an exciting meeting, it was very frustrating. And find out that, you know, we go and spend $80,000 on engineering, and can't tell anybody about what the outcome of the $80,000 expenditure was. So we're still going back and forth on this one. It's, it's really, it's got more curves than a roller coaster, so it's really exciting. I guess that's the question or comment I made, you know, even at the communication meetings, is sometimes you have to be careful what you ask for, because sometimes you get. And that's the same thing, is sometimes if you ask for an opinion from the lawyer and you pay them, you know, 1,500 bucks, you know, for less than an hour's worth of time, whether you should take their word for it or not, you know. So that's where the argument is starting to lie now, is that do you take the advice of your lawyer or do you do it on? Anyway, and then I went to the communication meeting in Lowman, and I've always enjoyed them. Brad and I have a history of going back and forth and picking on each other. Matter of fact, I think every community we ever have one in, they always pick on me. I usually just outlive it, so sometimes that's why, sometimes it goes a little long, but sometimes it doesn't. So sometimes it gets a little disjointed, but so. Anyway, you know, one other goes on in other communities, but it is quite true. It's nice to see everybody's communities doing something and moving forward. And I think it all works together in our advantage. Then I had a SEWA meeting, or executive meeting, and again, more or less we had to talk about the EOI stuff, which we didn't talk about, so it was a really, really exciting meeting. I've never felt so uncomfortable in my life, is what's going on right now with that. Then I have a meeting with the CDC, or the, not a meeting, but a interview with CDC. And this girl probably phoned me at least 20 times for information, you know, before she released her information on it, so. It was, I think she did fairly well. You'd think that after you talk to her for at least 10 hours, that you'd get more than that much of the clip, but she asked, and didn't, and then she got some information from other groups, too, so. So then I had a meeting, well, or the University of Calgary sent a group of students out, and they went out to the solar farm at the Bow. And then they went across the road to the local resort. There's a house, that's an eco house there. And so they had a tour of the eco house. If you want a tour, you can go on Rio Estate, I think it's the same one that Rio Estate's trying to sell for 6 million bucks.
Is that what happened around?
Yeah. So anyway, it's, so they had, they went out there, and then they came here, and they, they came to the, to the, we met, I met the bus at the subway, and they all decided they'd like to walk over, and, because it's in the bus forget, so they walked over to the solar park, and we went through the stuff in the solar park. So it was really pretty decent, they're a pretty good bunch of kids, I shouldn't say kids, because there's quite a variety of age group. And, you know, they had some very good questions. So I also plugged the SEWA project as a method of renewable energy. Now, the federal government right now is talking that solid waste and garbage is not a renewable energy. And I said, you know, it seems strange, we've been doing recycling for all these years, and yet our recycling goes up a little bit, but our waste, you know, goes up substantially more. So anyway, the, there, there's always a discussion back and forth on that. So anyway, but anyway, it was, they were a good bunch of kids who used to visit with. I have a solid waste meeting on Wednesday night, and then another EOI meeting this week to decide what the next steps hopefully you can go forward with. Well, that's good for me. I'll be glad when the SEWA project gets moving forward. It's, it's great to see, but it's frustrating. Oh, yeah, I'm supposed to have a meeting with Daniel Smith on 29th of December, or October, in Brooks. And then a meeting on the 7th with Inettin.
Just you and Daniel Smith?
No.
I thought, well, he must be an important guy.
No, we have her, one time she came to our, our community and rode on our float in our parade. And so I've met Daniel half a dozen times, but yeah, so, but no, it's. She's coming over to Brooks, because that's the right, and she's going to, yeah, Brooks Newell. And so it's really the County Newell area, but that's where this SEWA project is going to go, is in Newell County. So we're, we're trying to... We're looking for some more money to do the next phase, supposedly. But we don't fit into anybody's category until that number two, you give it to them, so. So we do that, create a deal. So any other questions for me? Nope, not. Someone wished to move the council post, Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Here, none, I'll call the questions in favor. Post? Here, none, I carry this very unanimously. Okay, moving on to the management's list.
So everybody's had a chance to review it. The only thing that was completed from the last meeting, obviously, we got the policy C01. We did get that, we didn't, didn't get it highlighted on here, but it is completed, it's crescent, updated. We also brought the member at large, so that will be off for the next meeting. We still need to give the memorandum of understanding with the county, so that's why that one's sitting there. And the X Society lease, again, we're gonna go for review with the information that was brought back by the X Society, going back to North and Company, and, and it'll go back and forth for a little bit there.
Just had a question. Asked to move your bulk water upgrades. What does that entail? Were they gonna do to upgrade it? Is it just the way that they...
Yes, yeah, so we're gonna, they're gonna take out the co-operated machine that we have, and they're gonna put in their new credit card or pass, they have a pass that you can buy from the county and prepaid for water, or you can use a credit card and purchase water, so.
And there was also a question as to whether or not there was gonna be an emergency stop there, or like a stop button?
There should be, as hard as it is to control there, so. We've never had one on there before, other than this, the, there is a switch that you can turn off.
I asked to go and use it, I filled, I filled a trailer with it, and I was quite taken aback by...
How fast the water comes out?
The pressure behind that, yeah.
Yeah.
And no way to stop it.
There, there is, there is a switch there that you can turn it off.
Is it?
Yeah.
Ask for a drink?
If we mark it too much, the guys that are beating on it, trying to get coins out of it, will smash the switch off. Does make it great entertainment for the neighbors across the street.
Yeah, sometimes...
As their grass is green.
Yeah. It's interesting to watch, sometimes they'll hold that hose. And there's, you know, huge discussions, too, about why there isn't an adapter on it, so they're...
Catwalk.
Hooking in catwalk, because of the contamination.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's, there's so many potential rules that come up because of contamination that...
Our bird environment requires an air cap.
Yeah.
So you have to have a gap between where the water comes out of your system and where somebody else's. So if somebody comes along and puts a catwalk on it, we immediately have people cut it off, because it's not an air cap.
So there's lots of rules.
Which is why the hose gets shorter and shorter and shorter throughout the hair as well, so.
But anyway, it's, it's, I think that the county's proposal to move it is going to be a huge...
Much better.
...method, because, you know, then they can bring in a super B and not have to drag it down our sidewalks and streets. And, you know, and we've got a resident, or a customer that is really very, very good at trying to be as fair to the neighbors, but there's just no way you can get off the street. And for us to upgrade, even at, even what we're doing here, you know, like some people on some of the Facebooks things have, you know, suggested why the town doesn't pay for it. Well, I'll bet you there isn't more than one residence a year that isn't town resident that uses water from that facility. Maybe, I'm wrong, maybe it's two.
It's two, yeah, maybe it's number two.
No, I was hoping that one resident.
Oh.
So, but anyway, again, you know, but it's, hopefully it'll be a good improvement. Like Kim says, once we get the new site moved, you know, up, and they can just move them.
We'll hopefully be able to decommission or use it just for our, for our public works.
Okay, any other questions on the action list? Okay, moving on to the CEO report.
And again, you've all had a chance to review it. It's been a pretty busy couple of weeks. I've got the worst from QB for the negotiations, so hopefully get that started before the end of the year. They've requested quite a bit of information. Just background for council as well, the entire QB group is brand new. So the people that I've been working with for 20 years are all gone, so it'll be a new experience with them. Hopefully it goes very well. I know from our guys' side, it's always gone really well, so. Quite a bit of conversations with community futures over what this member at large, the changes to their board structure looks like. So Ursula has also mentioned that she's gonna come to council, talk to North and Company about purchase agreements for industrial land, and looking at some different ways that we can do that. Aside from the real estate agreement that you'd offer for the land, we can also do a purchase agreement, which will tie to building commitments and things like that, so that we don't have to do it to the development agreement after the fact. So Wayne's been working on that for us right now. Essentially, what we're gonna do is, not to get too far into it, something very similar to what we did with Humic, where you sign your agreement, and on the purchase of it, you also sign an affidavit. But if you don't meet the guidelines, then we will get the property back, or at whatever terms we put in there. So when they sign for the property for the change of title, they also put an affidavit on file, how they trust, it says, if they don't meet their conditions, that we can transfer the property back. So we're just trying to get all the fine details worked out on that, and it's going along fairly well. As Miles said, we can get some interest, which is good, so we'll get that, hopefully, as quickly as we can. Completed the feedback from Municipal Affairs on the municipal indicators. One thing that we always fall back on, I think it's because we're way too honest when we did our tangible capital assets, is how we always get flagged for our rate of replacement on infrastructure, because our, a lot of our infrastructure is at life. And of course, that's because we did some stuff, so many in 1947, with very little value. And so I also, you have to comment on, on these indicators, then, so I commented on that. We've done over $12 million worth of work in the last eight years, investment in our infrastructure for our community just shy of 2,000 people. That's, that's incredible investment back into our community. So hopefully our indicators will start to come back. And the only other one is completely out of our control, and it is lack of public participation, because all of you are clamping. And so without an election, that throws up an indicator. So the, the response on that side was the public participation policy, and being able to have town hall meetings, those sort of things, try to get people involved in our community again. So got that filled out, they were happy with the responses, so it'll go on Municipal Fair website, and people will be able to see that. We've been working on budgets, and councillor and community members, or community members at our quarry, we had some questions about the construction of the industrial, just timelines and that, so we've been working on that. You all saw that email for this, for the RCMP, so that was floated on. Troy added that to the ongoing file that they have going on. And then again, questions about the spam and budgets as well for councillors. Successfully completed the re-recruitment for insisted finance manager, with start date of November 21st, but you'll most likely see them in place before that. This was just because of some holidays, this would be an official start date. So if they're in before that date, we're just paying them hourly and then to start training, so. That was, that was good. I attended the same training that you guys did for the third time. And I also attended the advisory committee meeting, just as the deputy down, just so that I can keep in informed on what's happening there, really. keep in, informed on what's happening there, really, a whole bunch updating budgets, and uh, and just making sure the plans are up to date, but, and getting some more training for everybody. Regional Communication Meeting was good, lots of, uh, it's really nice to be able to share that information, uh, there's, you know, as much as said it around the table during the formal part of meeting, uh, there's also quite a bit shared about what's going on in communities between meetings, that sort of thing, especially, uh, outside, not a very valuable, even though I did the training before. And that's my report.
Okay, any questions for Kim on that one, on this report?
No. The Telus and AXIA transition, we were scheduled for Friday here, they couldn't get an IP address to, and so we went, probably noticed there was a window on Friday where your emails didn't come from Gophin till three o'clock. That's because they had the internet down there, and our, shut our servers in, and so we have our, uh, they do on the backside, waiting for us to have IP come up, and tend to tell us, I couldn't get, tell us to, for whatever reason, to assign an IP. So at two thirty, two thirty, close to three, right before I phoned Tom, uh, he came back out and said, "What am I gonna put you back up?", so we're currently still on AXIA here, and they're scheduled to, uh, we're gonna do something down from Edmonton tomorrow, uh, and he's going to do our firewall upgrade, and then he's uh, he's gonna stick around tomorrow night and be here when Telus is here on that day. So, hopefully, because usually it's a five-minute turnaround, we sat for two and a half hours and they'll email our phones, so. On the bright side, on a Friday afternoon, uh, left me lots of time to do things on the agenda, so.
Now, one day you were running around, because the town phones were going to FCSS, and the peace officers as well, and then suburb's trying to get.
They got all their, they all, they got all of our extensions screwed up when they did the merge for the telephone system, so. We had that one resolved in a couple hours, but we're still, um, Karen's reached out to them, and they're supposed to be coming back today to do some onsite training with the gold system as well, so. It's a good thing we're saving a thousand dollars a month with that change, because the transition was not all those crap.
It was painful, was it?
It was.
Okay, anything else? Checking, if not, someone wished to move the legislature.
You were learning, wasn't you?
You were, you were.
That's right, you did two in a row, yeah.
So we'll lose the administration reports, any discussion?
Everyone keep their hands down.
Hearing none, opposed, paper? It's carrying. Hearing none, German.
Whoa, 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 there you go.
We gotta train somebody new, you know.
Yeah, I guess.
Casey missed the meeting.
Hearing all opposed, paper?
Yeah.
Actually, fishy.
I'm a little upset, he says.
Cool, too. Thank you.
My thought there, trying to keep not being gay every day until you start making them.
How are you guys? Ladies, gentlemen, will? I'll see you later.